Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi, board business?
I had given you draft minutes from January 15th and February 12th.
Anybody have any problems with them?
I had a few edits, I'll just pass them along to Aaron.
Well, I also have some changes too.
Substantial or just typos, or?
Minor.
Well, on January 15th, on page seven, I'll pass this to you. You mentioned New England Forestry Foundation was really new entry sustainable farming project. Those are people who looked at that land and they do farming and that makes it. Also for February 12th, I don't know, do you have anything you want to add in, Richard?
Let's get one out of the way first.
Yeah, just on the February 12th. I have a, I think one edit in there, and again, it's a minor edit.
Yeah. Do you want to say it, or?
It's, well, it's changing the words in a sentence around, that's all. So it sounds clearer. And it's a comment that I had made.
Okay, I have two suggestions, and one is on page four, talks about Mary Brown's 4.4, 5 acre parcel that's landlocked. And what it reads is, I'm not quite sure exactly what it said, but says it's landlocked parcel next to the town fours. It's really the door hole parcel inside the town fours. So I was suggesting changing next to as inside. I don't know exactly what's said, but that's more accurate. And on the last page, we're talking about Grimes Lane, it says Ms. McIver and Kay that more lots are shown than may be possible. And Mark also said that, so maybe add in Mark Montenary. So, yeah, those are the changes.
Okay. Yours, Richard, anything else?
Just, just some.
Just minor?
Yeah.
Mail?
Do you want to?
We should approve these, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved?
Yeah. Second.
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, mail, we got anything good? We got any money in the mail?
We did get money in the mail, actually. We've got the rest of the site plan application fees for Distribution Drive. The $22,000 plus on that. We did get a letter from residents on Beaver Brook, apparently on the 547 Gray Road, the Four Farm Wellness Center. Georgiana Gagnon, the owner, reached out to the neighbors explaining some of her future plans. Plans she brought to you, but some future plans. And apparently, the neighbors did not take well to some of her larger plans that she's thinking about.
Right, so does that go into segmentation, or just different phases, or?
Well.
That's just for information.
That's just for your information. She goes for a building permit, she can only pull building permits on what was approved. If she were to expand the house anymore, or add an outdoor tent, those would all require building permits. And those, Roland City would kick it back to you if there was something proposed that's different.
There's no proposal in front of us, it's just her idea of maybe future extension.
Right, and I, you know, on that side, it makes sense that she would reach out to her neighbors first on what the future plans were doing.
Oh, that's positive.
Yeah.
That doesn't always happen.
I don't think she was, she got a positive response back.
I would imagine not, but.
But anyway, so, there's nothing before us, there's nothing pending before us. I believe we're probably going to get a letter from all the neighbors in response to that, and if we do.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did, okay. Okay, we'll just file that.
And I see there's something here from Grimes Lane, resident there, is that mail, or?
I would recommend you hold that until we get down to the formal discussion on Grimes, yeah.
Our next meeting is the 8th of April?
Right now, you've got it scheduled for April 9th, the second Thursday in April.
We'd be back in Florida by then?
Yeah.
You're flying just to create our presence?
I do, I flew in yesterday, and, you know, I'll stay for a little bit.
We're cracking now.
No, I'm here. I haven't exactly figured out. Fixing business with pleasure, so, gotta work on my can a little bit, so.
I think bills and payroll are going around.
Yep. I'm gonna give them back.
And then the annual report, I gave you what I had submitted.
Yeah, it looked good.
Okay.
In case you're wondering where I come up with the numbers for the annual report, I keep track of all of the decisions, all the votes that you take. And then do a spreadsheet from there, and just pull those numbers into the report.
How much money did we bring in? Just the round, round numbers, just one of the proper.
$23,336.48, move on.
I think there's one out.
I didn't do the numbers in the application fees, I can get that for you.
No, no, I'm just curious.
No, I do track it, I just don't have it with this.
Was that close?
We're, we create, we create surplus, correct?
I was remembering back when Kathy Moll used to track those numbers for the planning board, I mean, ages ago, when I was on that side of the table. She was always happy when the planning board expenses were covered by the application fees. Were covering expenses and a good chunk of the salary as well.
That's because of the amount of developments that's taking place in town.
That's because our fee structure went up considerably.
And we also, at that time, we also had started redoing the fee structure.
You remember the fee, back in the old days, we were, fees were $400, $500, not $22,000 that we got in from Potpourri the other day, so, it's a fair amount.
Yeah, yeah. I remember we spent a couple long, long meetings on some subdivision applications, and they were, you know, it was very minimal fees at that time.
Yeah, back in the old, and back in the old days, we didn't have peer review either.
Right.
No, so we've come a long way from that. Now we have Green, and they should be, are they the ones supplying all the candy? They should be buying us coffee every time they show up, and things like that, for the amount of business that goes their way.
I don't know, I don't want to speak for Luke, but he might be afraid to give us caffeine.
Okay, doesn't want to keep us awake? Medicated? Oh, what a happy and playful board we've got tonight, huh?
Aaron, your annual report looks good. Do we need to make a motion and vote on this? I think we probably should.
It's already submitted.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I think it's very factual.
Yeah.
Should we approve it?
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aaron always does a good job, she's factual, she's, always does a good job, you don't have to worry about that stuff. Anything else in the other board business we need to take care of before we jump right into all the hottest items we have this evening?
Well, one other question I'm going to have for you later in the evening is what kind of time schedule you want to look at for the inclusionary housing. Do you want to start that now, or do you want, I mean, do you want to start the discussion now, or do you want to wait till?
I think we need to wait until we actually, we've only got like three minutes, or four minutes, what do you want to, what do you want to do for, you know, for three or four minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe the five people that are watching us on TV can go to the bathroom until all the good stuff starts or something, you know, while we wait.
I mean, you could invite Jonathan to set up his.
Yeah, if you want to get ready for all your stuff, might as well get ready. The stroke of a couple of minutes will be ready to. What do you have, like, the whole agenda tonight? Is that you, you're handling everything that's like quadruple dipping? Do you charge a rate for the whole night?
Yeah, I give a 20% per hour, the same hour.
Crooked's probably not going to work there. What's this one? This is King's.
Goldsmith Street.
Goldsmith Street.
Is that existing provision?
Yeah, the existing, yeah. Do you want to tell us that you're still related to them, and that give us the option to step off if you want?
I'm only related to one of the persons in here.
All right.
The rest of them I'm not related to.
Do you like the one that's in here, or do you not like the one that's in here?
I like the one that's in here.
All right.
At the moment, I've always loved you, my dear. We getting started?
About two seconds, soon as he's done with this.
Did he read anything?
No, this is a continuation. All right, we have a 7:45 continued public hearing for 5:11, 5-11 Goldsmith Street, mixed use special permit, water resource district, 14 unit residential subdivision. We, last we left off, we had everything over at Green's, Green has looked at everything, and assume everything is all set.
Almost all of the things have been addressed, there were a number of items that we deferred to the board upon waiver requests, and, you know, there were several waiver requests that we took no exception to, but we respectfully deferred to the board. There were a couple items with, relating to that wall on the north side of the, yeah, the wall on the north side of the site, where we did recommend that the design be stamped by a registered P E, just due to the, you know, the proximity to the adjacent lot, and it basically because it has vehicle loading immediately adjacent to it, more or less. So, we just thought that that was something that would be worthwhile. The other thing, the other thing related to the connection to the drainage on the, I guess that's the west side of the site. What the applicant did was, they were previously proposing work to connect to a catch basin on the other site, and since then, they've pulled the work back onto their property to tie into an existing pipe, but that pipe still goes on to the adjacent property, which, the owner, the ownership of which, of the drainage system, you know, is not indicated on the plan or is unknown. And as a result, you know, for maintenance purposes, or, you know, potential future failure of that, you know, if that line were to collapse or something, there's no recourse for this, this client, you know, the applicant to, you know, do any work on that property to, you know, repair their drainage system.
Is it town owned property, or is it?
No, no, it's, the property is not town owned, I don't know if there is a drainage easement. The applicant has said that they are not sure in their, in their last response. So, you know, what we recommended was that the applicant do additional research to see if there is an easement, and if not, they should obtain one or some sort of something, you know, allowing them to, one, make that connection to a system that they likely don't own. And whether, and I realize that there is an existing connection to that system, but in reality, there should have been some sort of easement or something for that connection, you know? So just pulling it back onto your property and saying it's existing doesn't really, you know, fix the situation. I believe that's, that's pretty much it. Oh, well, there was one other thing where the applicant had revised the drainage system. One of our previous comments was about catch basin to catch basin connections, you know, and we, we said that the town requires catch basins to be manholeed into drain manholes. And there's still a catch basin to catch basin connection on that same side, where they'd be tying into the, that catch basin on the adjacent property. So we, that's really the only design change that we had requested, and it's relatively minor. We recommended that they revise that to, you know, put a manhole, to tie into a manhole near there.
Manhole, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, to add a manhole and tie into that manhole. But other than that, the, all the other items are, there were a couple things that we recommended be included as special provisions, you know, stormwater pollution prevention plan, like, nothing earth shattering. And then there were a few items that we deferred to the board, and then the, there were, there was a comment from the fire department that was forwarded to us today. Thank you, Mayor. About, and that indicated that there was a parking space that would be removed to make a turnaround for, you know, fire department apparatus to, you know, to turn around and leave. And we just took a quick look, they have excess, they have parking, parking in excess of what is required, so removal of that space wouldn't, wouldn't impact them from needing that requirement. But other than that, I read through the, you know, a draft of the decision, and it seems like everything's covered.
Okay. You want to give us the final overview of it, the wall?
Yes. So the wall, which is going to be located along this property line and this back property line, that will be designed by structural engineer.
How high is it?
It's five feet.
So you're going to have?
Five feet above grade, yeah, above natural grade.
You're going to have to go to ZBA for variance to that?
Yes, yes.
Well, I just, I wanted to raise whether or not you, as the special permit granting authority, have the authority to give that variance, because this is in the mixed use district. And under the mixed use district, there's no provision that relates you back to intensity of use. And indeed, the entire project within the mixed use district is outside of the intensity of use and dimensional schedules of the entire zoning bylaw. You're doing multifamilies, and you have the site plan review, you have the total site plan review. So the only thing that the mixed use bylaw refers you to is the planning board's adherence to 173, I think it's 16, is the site plan review? Wait, did I hear the wrong number?
No, 173, is it 125?
It refers you to 17316, site plan review. And if you go into site plan review, there's nothing in that section that leads you down the road to end up at the intensity of use. So I think you have the, you have the ability here to look at the entire site plan, as you've done with Green as your, as your consultant, and make that determination.
Do you want us to rule on all three ways?
Oh, yeah, I think you can here.
I agree with you. I think you're right.
And that's the whole point of you having the whole overall site plan review from, excuse me, as special permit granting authority.
I saw that in the notes, I was going to, that was, that someone had made the comment that it should go to the ZBA, I thought that was upstream, this hits right within. She's trying to wash her hands of being responsible for the zonings.
It wasn't a question of that, because we are on discussion for a permit granting at our.
Right, and I think the question to town council should be, does the mixed use bylaw allow you to waive other provisions in the zoning bylaw? Usually, those are expressly called out, in open space, for example, that's called out there. In this case, I'm not getting the same feeling about this.
So then why don't we get the determination from Chris? If we can handle it in-house, I think we probably should handle it.
It certainly doesn't make any point for them to go to another board if they don't have to.
I totally agree, so let's get Chris on board, as if he's okay with that, have us issue, deal with the three waivers that you're asking for.
Can the village common district zoning change be placed? Incorporated in that change was the ability for us to waive lot setbacks, because of the intensity of that district.
Right, and that was the one issue that was, the one waiver that was called out that you could grant.
We specified that.
Right, that was specified. The waiver from footnote seven of the intensity of use schedule was not mentioned. And the waiver of more than three feet of unbalanced fill is not mentioned as something that you can grant.
How could you, how could you not have a bylaw that talks about mixed use without incorporating the intensity of that?
Exactly, which is why it should go to the, in my opinion, why don't you go to the appeals board? And I would recommend that you get town council.
I'm saying the opposite, we have a bylaw, we have a bylaw out that we have mixed use in that district. But how can you not have mixed use without more intensity? So we're, we're the ones that.
They don't go hand in hand.
No, they don't, I mean, the height of a wall, of a.
Five foot retaining wall.
That's, has nothing to do with, with mixed use, or the.
It's not been something that the planning board's been able to approve in the past.
I don't have a problem with acting on it, I just don't want somebody to question why we did it until we get any answer from town council. I think, I don't have a problem with doing it and having us doing it, town council doesn't feel that it's, that it's.
Yeah, well, we think it is, and we made the correct decision for tonight, and we're very close to the finish line.
Maybe the other alternative is to ask you to, you know, make a determination about your recommendations, and if town council says they have to go, then.
No, I think town council should take it and stand on his own, and then we make our decision, our decision based on what we want him to say or not to say.
Yeah, I don't think we should weigh in on the waivers if we're not going to relate to it.
Well, then.
Unless we need to go to town council.
Well, the applicant may just want your decision tonight, and then go to the board of appeals, it's not something they want to hold out for.
And I have problems with mixed use, this isn't mixed use, this is a knockdown to commercial, going for large scale residential multifamilies. And whatever you're proposing as, or what I think you refer to as a straw business, is part of a residential complex. There is no mixed use here. What we've done previously on, such as wayside kitchen, that did fit the bylaw clearly. This, I do not feel does that. I mentioned that in the beginning, has been pushing the envelope all along, and I don't think it meets mixed use. And, you know, even the write-up about, you know, fitting the goals of the master plan, it's to develop economic development. Having mixed use can support economic development, it can keep it viable, but to replace it completely with large multifamily residential development, I think is just wrong. It smacks against the intent, to be honest, simple.
Don, I was, I was here when we drafted that bylaw.
I was here too.
That had to do with the village common district, and the, the major intent of that, that MAPC helped us shape, was to bring more people into that district through a, through a mixed or residential component that it didn't have before.
But not a pure residential component.
It didn't, it didn't disallow a pure residential component, though.
That, that isn't the definition of mixed use, I mean, typically mixed use, you have a vibrant, commercial enterprise, usually on the ground floor, then you can have people up above. What we've done previously for the wayside kitchen, it was also used the provision that it could be a minor part and back. That squarely fit it, but in this case, it's just a knockdown, I mean, just, just extrapolate, should we knock down all of our commercial enterprise and put in large family developments? I mean, that is a financial obligation upon the community, it isn't mixed use, it's changing needs, period. I mean, that's my take.
Period, pretty much ends a statement, how it usually works on English?
Well, all right, it's fine, I mean, it's fine, you guys can both agree to disagree.
Well, that may be, that may be your interpretation, Don, but I, I think you are absolutely 180 degrees off.
And I would feel the same about your, your perspective.
Okay, well, we're not here to debate that, now.
Well, it makes a difference whether we're going to approve it.
You, you can decide not to.
Well, wait, wait, wait. They say the piece, we're done.
Yeah, I'm moving on, I'm, I'm going to, we're going to take the matter of the variances, the wa, excuse me, the waivers, and not deal with them tonight. We'll weigh in on everything else, leave the waivers, if you want to, wait to see what town council does as far as the waivers go, and decide whether they come back to us or go to the ZBA. You'll have an answer, hopefully by the end of the week, from town council as to which way to go on that one. But going through the, going through the application and everything else that's here, I do have an issue with what Green brought up about the connection. You're going to have to give us some, there's going to have to be some sort of easement or something to be able to go on to that connection that's outside of your connection.
Find out who owns it and where it goes.
Who owns it, yeah.
Who's responsible for it.
Go ahead. Not necessarily. The way that the regulations are written for stormwater management is, I can't increase the rate of runoff off the site to any design point. That catch basin, although it is not on our property, is a design point. I can eliminate our catch basin and not clean the water, and let it go directly to the design point where it goes now, which I reduce that rate by almost, actually more than 50%. I reduce the amount of water that goes there by 50%. So I am meeting stormwater management regulations, not to the maximum extent practical, but for, for that standard, for no increase in rate, I meet it. What I would not meet is the cleaning the water before it leaves the site, which, again, I only have to meet it to the maximum extent practicable. Introducing a catch basin, which is a water quality unit, treats the water prior to discharge to that design point, which is existent. I agree that it isn't on our property, however, there is a pipe that goes to it that we would be connecting to. So the question is, is it better to clean the water and discharge it to the catch basin? Or is it better just to let it go, because I can, I can eliminate a portion of that wall, and just discharge the water straight to the catch basin that it exists now in the way that it exists?
See, it has nothing to do with the, with standard two of the vastity of these stormwater management standards. It's not about, it's not about peak rate, it's not about the treatment standard, the TSS removal, it's about, it's about who owns that. It's, it is not, it has nothing to do with the ten standards.
I understand.
If you were tying into a municipal system, that's a different story. That's a, that is potentially a private system on a private piece of property that doesn't belong to you. So the fact that it's an existing condition, that there's an existing. So the fact that it's an existing condition, that there's an existing pipe there doesn't mean anything, and that you're reducing flow to it.
I respectfully disagree, because if it were just a low area with no drainage appurtenances in it, I can still discharge to it. If it were just a low area with no catch basin, that's a design point off the property, I can still discharge water to it, I just can't increase it.
But you're, you're counting on draining a part of your property. And if you were doing that, and you weren't creating a ponding condition on your property, then, then I guess that's what it is. You wouldn't be increasing peak flow. But you're, you're creating a point there that if there is an issue with that line downstream, you have no recourse for repairing it or having anyone else repair it. You, you're stuck with a non-functioning system and nothing you can do about it, you know? It's, 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 that, you know, that's just how it is. Like, it's the same situation that's there now. If, if that were to break now, you have no ability to go and just fix it or to have them fix it, it's just your stuff.
What goes into the pipe now? Pipe that goes onto their property? Is there a catch basin already attached to it?
I think there's a roof drain or something.
There's a roof drain and a perimeter drain.
So there's no catch basin tied into it now?
Well, what's a perimeter drain?
No, it's not a catch basin that's tied into it, no.
So it's just a roof drain from the building that's there?
Yes.
So there's, you're proposing to put a catch basin attached to it?
Yes.
All right, so that's a little different than just a plain old roof drain, right? I mean, the water flow going into it.
Right, but the amount of water that I'm going to put to it is half of what goes there now. Because of the way that I catch the water, and the water goes this way and it comes this way.
Our idea is that the condition now should have some sort of easement or some sort of mechanism, and that the proposed condition, even though it's less water, should also.
Well, you can design this so you don't use anything at all, correct?
No.
I thought you said just a few minutes ago that you could take the water even though you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can, I can just put a hole in the, in the wall in this section, because I'm only a foot above grade. And the reason why I was a foot above grade was to have cover over the pipes. I can eliminate a portion of the wall, and the water will go to the catch basin as it goes now.
This catch basin is the one we're talking about or one of the street?
It's the one that we're talking about that's, that's on the other property.
So just runoff of the.
Is it possible just to create a swale in a, in a wick? Instead of a catch, you know, instead of draining it off side out, you know?
Uh, no, I wouldn't be able to store like the 100-year storm or something like that.
What do you, what do you have for gravel in today? Is that, is it?
It's very gravelly, but the size of the infiltration area in that, in that, in that location, plus I'm not sure that I have.
All right, what if, what about carrying it to the front?
Uh, this is the low point of the site. I wouldn't be able to gravity feed it all the way to the front.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, just, just to know where the heck I'm looking at. Show me Little Peach. That's, that's.
Oh, Little Peach.
Right there. And he's got a retaining wall on the back of Little Peach.
Yes.
And you're going to put that hole, that, that, right, you presently have.
He's got drainage.
Drainage, where is the one we're talking about right now?
The catch basin is right there.
Right there, which is on Little Peach's side of the, of the wall.
Yes.
And then, it's also attached to the backside of the mail post office.
No, it's high.
No, the post office is connected to a different drain.
Yeah.
This drain then goes out to Jennifer.
That's where that one goes.
Yes.
And it's high, it's in that Little Peach, behind Little Peach store. The, what, what would it, even though it's a low point, you could, you could put a sump in there and, and get it out to the front?
But he's still tack, attaching to something he doesn't own and nobody knows who owns.
No, I mean, I'm trying to find a way of not, not attaching to that. Right now, he has two, two roof drains that clearly go into it. Two sixes and.
From his own property?
Yes.
So you're already dumping into somebody else's pipe presently?
It, you know.
Oh, can't there be someone over here?
Yeah. And that goes out to the street, so there had to be some, some kind of coordination in the, in the past to allow all of that to take place.
Probably can find anything, right? I mean, there's no tightening, you don't do.
Jimmy?
Jim? We looked through our records, and we don't have anything in the office. I, I thought there was a plan, you know, a hand-drawn diagram of that, and the rumor mill is that it was put in by the town years ago. We thought it had to do with when they built Little Peach, that it created a problem back there, and to help drain the Cormier property back then. When Mr. Fields brought the plan in the other day, that kind of looks to me like it was put in probably when they built Little Peach, but it still connects to the town drain system. You know, I don't know if we have a set of plans from Little Peach that shows that on there.
Well, when you say it's unknown, is it, if it's on Little Peach's property, isn't it Little Peach's camp?
Right, but there's no easement for it.
Can't you go to the owner of Little Peach and, no, it's an existing condition? You just want the right that if something happens or it's already tied into it, to have the right to, how hard is that to get a, an easement from?
The owner of that property is the Tedeschi Corporation, which is like trying to get something from D C U. It's very, very difficult. That's the problem. And, and as Jim said, it's tied, it's tied into the town, and it's been there. The question is, the town probably installed it, and in those days, they didn't document the easements.
So if it, if it did fail, you'd have to go through Tedeschi to fix it?
I would imagine Tedeschi would be responsive at that point, because if it failed, it would be a mutual problem.
What can go wrong with this thing? This pipe, is it, wears out, tax leaking underneath it because of the sinkhole? Is that what goes wrong with this pipe going under Tedeschi's line?
If it were to fail, the soils in the area would eventually take the stormwater, eventually. It would pond up and it would take, you know, a few days.
But if it failed halfway through Tedeschi's parking lot, then it's, it's junk, right?
It's below, it's below, it's between the concrete wall and the parking area for.
So it does not go underneath the driveway?
No, it's, it's.
So you could very easily get at that pipe at some days in the future and dig a trench and make that pipe proper. Because you don't know what it's like now, correct? You can send a, a camera down, right?
We didn't, we didn't send a camera down it, but we did open up Jennifer Street, man hall and.
Talk back and forth?
No, they did the inverts and you had the right.
The CMP was clean on the ends.
See, you know, we show those concrete?
No, CMP, corrugated metal.
Oh. Yeah, that's not good.
I don't know. You think it's falling in that pipe, then who knows?
Here's, here's how I see it. It's, you know, the proper thing would be to have, have a easement in place. But, but, you know, the proper thing, or what makes the most sense right now, we got two, two roof drains going in to that pipe from that property, and, and we're, the proposers here are asking if they can stay connected to that with less square footage of water even. That's what makes the most sense.
Do we want to right, put it right knowing that it's not right? Or do we say this is the best they can do with what they've got?
That's, that's.
Without making it worse? Or, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have a good, we do it, they do it at risk.
I think we have to do the, make the best of a bad situation.
This is a tough.
They're doing it at their own risk. If it fails, the onus is on, on the, the complex to rectify whether, whatever they have to do with Tedeschi's, whoever it is after that, if we something to put on.
They're right, Tedeschi can come back and say we.
It could fail today, and they would have that scenario.
Give them permission to hook into, into somebody else's property.
They are.
Yeah, well, whether they are, that's, somebody else got away with it, but I'm not going to say, go ahead. Personally, I don't think it's, the town will be liable.
So what we do? Roll them and go, tell them to stop draining into it now?
No, we can't tell them what, we can't tell them what to do with something that's already pre-existing as far as I'm concerned. We're not going to tell them, go ahead, dump it into your, your neighbor's lawn, land. I'm not going to say that.
All right, so because he's, I'm just walking through the logic, so, because they're tearing it down, they're going to build a new structure, don't let them tie the new structure into the existing.
Well, here we go with the Moore Lane deal.
Yeah, it's all I'm saying, like, because you're cutting a feedback loop, like, how do you?
I just don't, I, I think they had to, you know, send a letter to Tedeschi's and, and say, listen, this is what's going down here, we're willing to upgrade the pipe if that's what you need, or, or we agree to, to repair any damages should the thing fail in the future. I mean, what, what is it? You're talking 150 feet of pipe, three feet down? What's it going to cost you? Two grand to put the pipe in? It's not a big expense, correct?
It's not, it's not that, but I mean, they could say.
No?
Go pound sand.
Well, well, that's their right. It's their land. How would you like if they were dumping their stuff to your land, and then you wanted to do something later and? Oh, we already got a pipe in it, and these guys are already into it, you can't fiddle what you're putting into it now. It's a, you're looking as if you were there in their shoes. That's how I'm looking at it.
Right, but I, I'd like you to take a look at one, one other scenario.
All right.
Just, just to close the argument. Let's ignore the two pipes that go into that catch basin, which are these two pipes.
Yeah.
That's the amount of area that drains to that catch basin. It goes into it right now, all of it. Under proposed conditions.
Yeah.
That's what goes to it. So barring the pipes, if I even just get rid of the catch basin altogether, then I have no connection to there, and letting the water go.
Yeah.
So, and, and the amount of water that goes there, I'm certainly not going to fail that system by decreasing the amount of water that goes to it by 50%.
I understand. I like your plan. I just don't like where it goes. I don't like the fact that you don't have permission to run it across their property.
The property is currently.
It doesn't matter who owns it.
Discharging water onto the neighbor's property.
The guy up the street is pumping his out on the, on the, on Jennifer Street, and you got to drive over a river of, of ice every morning, because he's some pumping his basement out right out of the road.
We're not some pumping anything. The property is currently discharging water onto the next property, and we can change the property as long as we don't increase the water that's discharging off the property.
So you're still putting it on somebody else's property?
It, it is now. It's going there now, that's the point.
New development.
Pardon me?
New development. There's new development there now, she just said.
See, Peter, I, I see this as a pre-existing condition. Now, now, let's, let's, let's just, let's just picture it this way. What, how would you feel if they, if they just, the pipe, if they just intercepted the pipes that are on their own property and put a catch basin around them? Would you say that they have to upgrade everything and get the easement and everything to put a catch basin on their own property?
On their own property, no.
On, on their own property, on pipes that are going through their own property?
Yeah.
Would you, would you say that they have to get an easement because eventually that goes onto?
No, it's on their own property.
But this is not, this is going off their property.
No. What they're doing here is they're doing essentially the same thing. They're intercepting the drainage that's leaving their property before it leaves their property.
And pushing it over to somebody else's property.
But, it's, it's a, it's, it's a pre-existing condition as far as I'm concerned.
That would be fine, that would be fine if they weren't touching it. The fact that it was a pre-existing, I could buy in that you're leaving it exactly the way it is. They're changing it now, so the pre-existing really goes away.
But they're changing it for the better.
How hard is this to run a structure, everything else to the front to the Goldsmith?
I don't know if that works. I don't know if you can make that argument. I mean, you can make the argument, run it off that hole.
Can you run everything to Goldsmith Street? Are there two basins out there now?
Um.
That's what I thought we heard at the last meeting.
I, I added, so, so to catch this water and discharge it to there.
Yeah.
I possibly could, but the wall would become five feet all the way. Right now, that, that wall's only a foot high in this area. I'd rather get away from it happening.
But that's on the backside of Tedeschi's wall, right? Or no?
Yeah, so his wall's three feet, this one right here is a foot. So we'd be two feet higher than his wall.
And, and how long?
Or to change the pitch?
Right, because I got a, this catch basin would have to, you know, I need a, I need a foot for the rim.
You've got to go five feet.
And I need a foot down for the top of the pipe. So I'm down like almost three feet for the invert, and I got to make it out to here.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite a run. I'd have to look at it.
Now, what's the depth of the, of the basin out there that you can go down to?
198.
198. 198, and so, so grades out here would probably be in the 205 range.
So what are they now?
201.
202. So you'd raise a grade four feet in the backside of that in order to get the pitch?
Yeah.
But that's where the invert is out on the street, is at 98?
198, yeah.
Can you go lower?
No.
Can you put a pump in? Little chamber and a pump? That might be a lot simpler than raising that whole wall and all the grade.
I usually don't.
Well, Sherry, you had a good point. You have to come back. We're going to weigh in on the waivers back then. Why don't we see if everybody can work something out with this, and maybe even see what Tedeschi can do about it, because obviously this is a, something that came up at the 12th hour, rather than go through any more of it. I don't think we have any other real issues.
And can we talk, can we talk about the rest of the site?
Asking whether or not it would be helpful to have the town at the table in that discussion? Might be appropriate.
What, what I could do is talk to Jim ahead of time and then.
Yeah, the only thing I can think is, like I said, see if we have a print of Tedeschi's site plan.
I mean, I meant through the chair, if I talk to you ahead of time about what the town has it hooked up to and everything, so I can properly explain to Tedeschi.
If it's cooperated, hooked up right to Jennifer Street, and that goes down to, so that's what other, at a general, King Street. Just to be extra clear, it's not the, the amount of water.
Yeah.
It's not the volume of water that the comment's about. So just, just to be clear, I know it kept kind of, sometimes it kept straying over to less water or more water. That's not what the intent of the comment was.
Right.
It's impacting a neighbor, and they have no recourse to repair it if something happens, and the neighbor has no recourse if later, you know, if it's an issue, it becomes an issue for that side of the street. Okay, so why don't we continue until the ninth?
A meeting again on the ninth?
A meeting again on the ninth. Yeah, so we get town council, and we'll, we'll fight out, what else? Any other issues with the site plan that we want to make them aware before we come back on the ninth?
I, because this is in a high-visibility area, I would like to see some, some kind of green, either fencing or, or something at the end, at the end of the parking lot.
Do you have that already?
Between the, between Goldsmith and the parking?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Because one of the intense intentions of this zone is to keep the parking out of, out of the visible eye.
Okay.
You want a hedge?
He's got some shred, shrubs there, but I think, you know, five foot green fence or something, some sort of screen would be better. Green fence, yeah, some sort of...
Hedge?
A green fence is a fence that you grow vegetation on.
Right, could be hedge, could be whatever.
Yeah.
It's a structure that you grow vines on or whatever.
Exactly.
Come up with a, it could be shrubs, give us, could be trees.
The engineer would do something on that.
Come up with something, sort of screening. I provide... That's all, that's all.
Okay.
No one provides?
Anyone else from the road?
There's more of that letter I'd like to get through, so there's some things that the engineer deferred to the board.
One of the things, one of the intentions of the zone is to eliminate the visibility of acres of parking.
Great, the draft decision is number 2-5 in your pocket?
You've got, you keep the fence back and you've got 20 feet of visibility when you pull out to the...
Sorry.
What? The draft decision was number 2-5.
I have that, I was, I was, wanted to go through Green's letter for the rest of the comments on Green.
Alright, can you guys let us finish here?
Be able to see you in the parking lot?
Go ahead.
JJ, you wanna do it or don't you wanna do it? I'm on, I think we're on number four. Number 12 is the fire department comment, and you already heard about that.
Yep.
Okay, number 14 is the pipe sizes.
Any fire department that covers sprinklers too, which was, came in recently? You mentioned fire department.
Sprinklers are in the building code.
Right.
That'll be part of the building code. 14 is the six, eight, and 10-inch diameter pipes. JJ, wanna speak to that?
Yes, so we prepared a Weaver request letter. One of the Levers is to allow the use of smaller pipes on the site. The regulations state that they need to be 12-inch reinforced concrete pipe. The drainage on site, for the amount of water that goes to these two catch basins and trench drain, it's not warranted to have 12-inch pipe in there. Adequately conveys the 100-year storm with plenty of storage inside the pipe. So, we're asking for a waiver to allow the pipe sizes as designed in the drainage calculations to be specified on the plan, which are smaller pipe sizes.
Do you have an issue with it?
No, no, I don't, I, we wrote in our response, we said we take no exception to the waiver request.
That's fine.
You're not changing it?
What are you lowering down to?
Material of the pipe.
You're not putting in 12s, you're not putting in fours.
So it's like about six?
No, six, 10, 10, 12, six.
The six is only the roof drain.
Yeah, the six is the roof drain, everything else is...
Anything else that he's got in there is perfect, alright, thank you, Ken.
Number 15?
Number 15 states the class of pipe in the regulations that requires reinforced concrete pipe. Seeing as this is on private property, we've designed all the pipes to be HDPE, which is plastic, with the one concrete pipe going from our site into the right-of-way, which will tie into the existing drainage system for the town. That will be 12-inch RCP.
The pipe underneath the driveway?
Yeah.
Is gonna be concrete, right?
No, the, everything underneath, everything on the site will be HDPE, high-density polyethylene.
In the past, we haven't allowed HDPE under, under a driveway. The reason for that is to be sure that pump trucks or motor trucks can get across without any issue.
I respectfully disagree, because, no, because I did do a drainage system, which is in the town right-of-way on Washington Drive, that was all HDPE.
You did, that's right.
And that was two years ago.
But let less intensity of use on Washington Drive.
James?
Mr. Fields came in and we talked yesterday about this, and they're showing a connection into the middle of the pipe. We talked about preferably going into the existing manhole structure. But we have to look in the structure to make sure, cause we already have a couple pipes going in, and it's not gonna ruin the integrity of the manhole. But there's also a gas line on that side of the street and a potential buried telephone. So he's gotta worry about the height, so he might have to change his pipe size going into that to be able to make it work, and he's not gonna know until he does, either goes to do the job or do a test.
I'm not paying the size of the pipe, what about the make of the pipe?
It should be, the stuff that we use is concrete, so the other choice we talked about is you might have to use ductile iron pipe, depending on what kind of cover he has.
That's going from iron manhole out to your existing, but not in the site.
Correct.
So in the site?
Yeah, in the site, we're, we didn't really care. The, we would prefer it to be in the manhole because it's, it's already existing, and, you know, they're proposing some kind of a doghouse over the pipe, and I'm just not 100% comfortable with that, so...
Going out through the street, why don't you go with the concrete and you can...
Yes, and that's what's proposed. And that's what's proposed, unless we have to use...
Ductile iron.
Yeah, and like I said, he might have to reduce the size depending on where that gas line falls.
And you're building this and obviously...
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that takes care of 17, which is the manhole discussion. 19 just had to do with...
Well, that 17 is...
Sorry?
Sorry, 17, that takes care of it on that side. We did mention, when we were giving that summary, that we, the other side of the site, the back of the site, was still tying into a catch basin. So we did mention that in 17.
Back to the Tedeschi thing.
Right, exactly, just to make sure that...
I wasn't trying to slip one by.
That needs to be addressed regardless.
19 had to do with the aesthetics of the building, and we have been, we've been describing it and showing you things. This is an artist's rendering of type and style of the building, the scale, the roof form, the entrances, et cetera. Pretty consistent with what we had shown you without the detail.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Looks like a little village, in the Village Common District.
Okay, looks like a huge land.
21, I think is the ZBA.
20, just sorry to jump back in, I apologize for cutting you off. 20 was just one that we deferred to the board. Where units 12, 13, and 14, the entrance is on the back. We just wanted to point it out, you know, when we were first looking at this, it was unclear. You know, I guess it didn't occur to me that they would park in that parking lot and then walk around the back of the building. It's just something we wanted to point out.
Units 12 and 13, why don't you...
12, 13, and 14.
And there, 12, 13, and 14.
These three.
Well, the one on...
That's again the Tedeschi side? It's actually only these two that would have access.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have to walk from the parking lot to those two units? It'll be well-lit and there won't be, there won't be cars there, so it won't be, it won't be a... It will be a pedestrian-friendly walk from the parking lot to those two units. 21?
I'm not real thrilled about that idea. Is it cause it's the inside corner there?
Yes, yep.
So this is all paved around here, so it's like a big walkway.
I know, but still, it's the back of the building. It's back of the building, it's, you know...
What's the side facing the...
It's safety issue, I think.
Parking. Walking off the entire block, that's safety too.
I don't know, it just seems strange.
Do you have a rule as to the front doors need to face?
No, not really, I'm just...
It's just they got a shorter walk to go to Tedeschi's to buy their beers.
It'll be well, it'll be well-lit.
Wow, okay, alright. Okay, next.
Here says all primary, commercial, residential building entrances shall be visible from the right-of-way and the sidewalk, and shall have an entrance directly accessible from the sidewalk. This is owned by law.
Yeah, that's the other way, so if there's an emergency, how's the, the responder's gonna know where to go to get to those units?
It'll be a little...
A little plaque.
There's a sign up here that says units 13, 14 with an arrow.
But, you know, that is part of the zoning.
Cause all of them will have their own unit numbers on the door.
Why don't you just create a space between 13, 14, and 9 and put a sidewalk in there?
We got a little bit six feet closer to Goldsmith Street.
Yeah, sort of like to like split this here and push these units that way.
We're losing it.
Move 12, move 12 to 14 closer to the back lot.
Yeah, let's do that.
We could, we could surrender a unit and then reduce the number of affordables. We'd offer three affordables on...
Oh, that was a good little throw-in there, huh? That was awfully quick, were you planning on this?
No, not at all.
You're pretty dark quickly.
Not at all, I'm just, I know the numbers.
Yeah.
So, it, well, it could move closer to the, to Goldsmith too. That is the, what we have, 0.3 feet. And then to the rear, it can go back eight feet.
Well, there you go.
Well, let's not let this be a sticking point on where how someone gets into their house or not. Keep moving.
The bicycle comment, each of these units has a basement, so we believe that bicycle, if this isn't a destination where bicycles are gonna come to and need parking, but people who have bicycles in the units will be able to keep their bicycles undercover in their basements, each of them.
Yeah.
How do you get into the basement? Through the kitchen or down the stairs?
No, I think...
HF bolt kids?
They're, parkour walkhouses, it's three steps down on the back, because the top of the foundation's 207, Jonathan?
Yeah.
And the bicycles aren't really intended for residential...
201.
Isn't intended for residential use.
So you were saying to me that the top of the foundation is 207?
Yes.
And the...
So...
Cellar is 201?
Yeah, so there's gonna be a couple steps down into basement.
It's not a crawl space, but it's not a full basement. Six feet of headspace, basically.
So this isn't really considered...
Well, finished grade, so then down, sorry.
I started the question first and he kept on...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to have my answer.
It's gonna be either a seven-foot wall in the basement with two steps down into it from existing right on the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
The whole nature of bicycle stuff isn't where you store it in a residential unit. The idea is mixed-use, be commercial enterprise, it'd be to get to a commercial place and park the bicycle and use it inside, so it's friendly to bicyclists and pedestrians. And when you say bicycle parking areas are not applicable to this design, I agree, cause it's all residential. There is no...
You're gonna beat this horse to die, so you're gonna pull your horse and grab your reins and just...
This is what underscores the whole idea of mixed-use, you know, village setting.
Yeah, we heard that earlier.
Well, it makes sense, and there's a problem here, and I think it's worth all the nonsense.
This is what they've, this is what they've designed, this is what they're proposing, and this is what we're voting on. We're not voting on you getting a building in there that's gonna sell popcorn or anything else. This is what they have in front of us. If you're running for election, do it outside.
I'm calling the comments right here. You can pay attention and have a few manners for a change.
Oh, me have manners?
The two of yous.
So there is a real issue here, and that's the nature of what's underneath here.
Let's keep on pointing.
On the mixed-use is the district.
We don't need to...
No, this is, we're talking about...
Prior to this zoning, there was no residential component. Now we are allowing the residential component, which is the mixed-use.
This is conversion, it isn't mixed-use.
23, each unit is gonna have a light on the door, their own light on the door, but we will also light the corners of the building so that the...
What about parking lot? Do you have any lighting on the parking lot?
Corners of the building will light the parking lot. Board of Health is number 24. I think the 25 happens as a building permit, right, prior to the building permit. I don't think that gets loaded on here. I mean, it gets a requirement that it happened before the building permit. And then the last thing was the GFA, which you're gonna find out if you want us to go to those ZBA.
Okay, alright, so why don't we take a few issues on the 9th? Talk about redoing something about possibly, if you can, put the entrances all on the inside so that you don't have to walk around the building if that's what you decide to do.
You know, the, in terms of the entrances, if you were to move the, if you were to move the first floor, first floor only, so you have a covered walkway, second floor over the first. That is aggressive to the... So the roof line, roof line's continuous.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so...
Makes a bigger second floor.
Want to do the first thing? 7, do you want?
7:45?
You want 7:45 on the 9th?
Do these units have back doors?
Yes.
Rear doors?
Any earlier.
Yeah, so if you, if you were to do that, that would give another access to the rear, rear entries too.
Well, no, 7:45, but we have... Normally, we don't have this many issues, this should have, to be honest with you, this should have all been resolved before it even came before us to be perfectly... To have 25 issues that we had to go through before, you guys should have had a meeting of the minds with all the parties involved for the 25 issues.
The real issue is the catch basin.
Okay. Property score, not popping it again. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have an eight o'clock. Shared public driveway, 36 Tehadawong.
What's the attorney says? It is what it is.
Okay. Who wants to read it? Come on, Martin, you're making us fall behind. Who's the clerk? Thought he was the clerk.
No, but you usually take over reading, which is a little faster.
No, I thought I was the clerk.
Oh, then he reads it.
Alright, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Read on, McDuff.
Okay. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 12, 2015, at 8:00 p.m., Room 103 of Town Hall at 37 Channick Street to consider the application of a shared residential driveway permit pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 48, in the count and the code of the Town of Littleton zoning. Shared residential driveway, section 173 through 125 through 173 to dash 127. The proposed shared residential driveway would serve two new houses when existing at 36 Tehadawong, utilizing a portion of the existing driveway. Property location map is U34, parcel 27. Owner and applicant, 36 Tehadawong Road LLC. Application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's office during their regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Crowley, clerk.
Oh, you've actually drawn us a plan of what a shared residential driveway looks like, thank you.
That's right. I figured that was what we were supposed to do.
No, some, never mind. So why don't you give us a brief overview of what's existing, what's proposed, and what you're doing about the drainage for it?
Okay. My name's Ben Auswood, I'm from TTI Environmental. Dave Murray's here, he's the principal of 36 Tehadawong LLC. We were here, a few meetings ago, we did the Form A plan, divided up the property into three lots, and I guess everybody is familiar with, there's a driveway here, existing, comes up and services an existing house. It's a big old stone house. So what we're gonna do is keep that existing driveway. It's about 11 to 12 feet wide right now, we're gonna widen it to 16 feet. So we widened all the way up to where the first lot splits off. We're providing a turnout about halfway up around the hill. The existing driveway, as it is now, will continue, and then there's a turnoff to Lot 3. And this turnoff comes across as an easement across the center lot, gets to Lot 1. Tried to design it so that these driveways sheet flow into just some shallow pond areas. They won't be dug out, they're designed so we can just build a berm through the woods so we can keep the trees, minimize disturbance, so we have one down here. We have one right here to catch this driveway, and one down below this driveway to capture that runoff there. We've got easements all shown here, for water, electric, and septic systems have all been designed. They've been submitted to the show of Board of Health. We have a few review comments that we're submitting tomorrow, so I think we did have a few comments from some of the town's officials, but I don't think there's any earthshadow.
From the electrical, how many acres are we talking, this whole, the total project?
I believe it's 13 acres.
So three houses on 13 acres.
Right, right. So, it's a big, it's a big drumlin, we've tried to kinda keep things...
In its natural state as much as possible.
Right, right, you know, we, that's about it, a quick overview.
Well, there'll be a point, you see, the electrical now comes up from the top side, right?
Right.
You're gonna eliminate that and bring it from the other direction?
Little power outlet said we gotta come out up here somehow.
You gotta go underground, you gotta go over...
I don't know what they require, I assume they'd probably do underground. They may, they may do a combination, I've seen a lot of times they'll bring poles up through the woods and then underground.
Does Board have any other questions?
It's a, it's a very, very steep driveway.
It's, actually meets the requirements.
Not that bad.
Eighty feet.
It's a long run.
Goes up 80 feet.
You seen that house? It's a long ways, but it's not a steep driveway, it's only about... Yeah, I think the requirement's 10%, and we meet that all the way up.
We do.
This is a 16-foot section, meets it, it gets a hair steeper right... Yeah, sixteen-foot section meets it, it gets a hair steeper right here, but.
The only issue is the corner, the lower corner where you say you got to widen it, that's, it's kind of blind coming in both directions, so by widen it and maybe a little curse out of it.
Right, and that's why we kind of put the pull-off right above the corner too, so that somebody could, you know, as they come down, if somebody's coming up, they can pull off if they need to.
Yeah. Have you ever been in that building?
Beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful.
Couldn't, couldn't create any guardrails system out of that bend at the bottom?
We're leaving it alone, there isn't one there now, it's really not that severe, it's just, they start, they start sliding on that hill, they'll never go right over.
I slid over there this winter, I didn't go anywhere.
Starthwaite Smith's been going up and down that fifty acres. Issues with it, so I don't think adding to my house is going to make that one to the difference, but it's a beautiful wooded lot, it's nice that you minimize it, what you're doing, not bad.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Good.
And then.
I'm all set.
I think I'm all set.
You got some butters here, I think.
Oh. I was wondering about the frontage, is there a amount of frontage that you'd need for a house?
Those A and R's have all been done and approved, you've got two reduced frontage lots and a full frontage lot in the middle of it, they were, they were done at a previous meeting, so those all meet current zoning as they sit right now, the driveway is just so that you didn't have to come up with three different driveways, combine them all together so you minimize how many driveways you put in there, that's why we're doing the shared driveway, but as far as the frontage, it's two reduced frontage lots and a full frontage lot.
Could you say your name and address also, Martin?
Oh, I'm Richard Adams, and I live in sixteen Tehadawahn.
Yeah.
Does yours want to down further, down off to the side?
Yeah, I don't think mine's on there.
Oh, it's on the plane?
No, I don't think so. I'm the first house on the left, last one on the right.
Yeah, this is my property.
That's yours. Yeah, the, that was A and R three, four months ago.
Yep, it was in December.
Thirteen acres, full, three houses on thirteen, one of them. Is it two of them?
There's a few more up there too, couldn't you?
You could have.
Go ahead.
Don't get me going.
Allenville, twenty-six Tehadawahn, and that parcel I just showed you. My concern is that it's a very wet hill, it's a hugely wet hill, and we have three one horsepower sump pumps in our basement going on all the time. We've got paddock, we've got a paddock up there that was wet all year last year, that there's springs up there, there's a lot of, we put in a diversion trench up there last year as well, a hundred-foot diversion trench, and we've got some serious water going on there. And so I guess my concern is, you know, with these, with these new foundations and things going on, if they're two fairly big footprint properties, is there any protection for us or about, you know, upsetting the water flow up there, and what recourse might we have?
That's a good point.
Very good point. The, the site is a, is a drumland, packs and soils, it's very dense, I think you guys are probably all familiar with it. You know, the water does, there's quite a bit of water that flows off-site, it's a big, it's a big area. We've done the calculations to show that the, we do not increase the flow off of the site, and we actually, these ponds are just designed so that they don't really have a low outlet, so the water will flow in and will just stay there and drain in, because it's up at the surface, by building these ponds kind of on the surface, we're able to use that top and subsoil which will let the water leach out.
So they're detention ponds, basically.
They detain the water, right.
So they're more like dams, as the water comes down, hits the, it attenuates right down in there, it doesn't keep going.
Right, right, they'll fill up, and eventually they'll overflow, there'll just be a long grass, you know, overflow area, but it will hold back some water so that the increase in volume is actually attenuated, we pretty much have the same volume going on. You know, when you develop a site, I don't think you're ever going to say you have no impact on the water table, I think we'll probably lower the water table by intercepting water with the foundation's foundation drains. You know, you take a site like this, you actually have foundation drains and such, we drain them down over here, they go into that little area, you kind of reduce the, the water that you'll have coming down here over time because you're draining it out underground, so I don't think, and I've seen the paddock, we did a lot of survey up there, and it is wet, it's, it's not wetlands, it's just it's where the drumland is, where it kind of flattens out, and it's, yeah, the water comes closer to the surface, so it is a little bit wet down there, and then the rain, that's where it goes, it heads down here to the low area, so.
Well, it, it's like the exact, this is one of the pair of drumlins, Wilderness Hill is another drumland, like the Starhill one, and it does drain, such as the Proudhouse, which is now an F, and that drains into Fay Park. So, yeah, there's a certain amount of clay content there, so it doesn't absorb, but it does drain quite a bit.
Right.
So one of the things you're trying to do is, you know, like water bars, wherever you're trying to divert some of the drainage off the roads and presumably suck something filter from, is there some way you can make sure adjacent property isn't impacted? You're bringing new roads, and it seems like you're uphill from.
Yeah, I think Don hit on a, on a very good thing, this, this one driveway that goes to the, the, the single house behind Mr. Bell's house, doesn't show any, any berm or anything on the downhill side, I think it should have some sort of a berm there.
To divert.
And maybe, maybe water bars and drainages to bring it to, to your catch basin, or, or maybe another catch basin up behind Mr. Bell's house.
Well, if I could just address that, the, we don't need a berm, but if you look at the topo, up here, the driveway, the topo is tilted this way, so the driveway is actually tilted into the hill.
Right, how much?
So anything that's coming down, it's probably, you know, quarter inch per foot from left to right, so, you know, it's a few inches, I mean, a berm, you don't get a ton of water, it's going to jump above, it's not going to pond three inches over the driveway, it's not going to flood and draw over the driveway, but.
With a heavy storm, you will get sheet erosion, ground be saturated.
Can you finish, sir?
The, the water will come down the uphill side of the driveway, but then if you see here, we've kind of tilted the grade, so now the driveway will switch, so as it comes down the inside of the driveway, and then it will just kind of cross over into this pond. So that's the way, that's the way we've designed it, it's a pretty, it's a full proof system, I mean, there's.
So the driveway's going to be pitched, and it's going to sort of act as a berm itself, and it gets to the end.
It'll act as a drainage swale, because you pitch it, so it'll run along the side of the driveway, and then as it gets down towards the pond, the driveway will just pitch, and then the water will flow crops, and just being a residential driveway, that's an okay condition.
I, I like the idea of, of having a berm there to prevent any, the massive flooding that might come down the hill from crossing over the driveway and then just continuing.
Problem with a berm is they just don't last, you know, we could, if, if the alternative is to have a flat driveway with a berm, you're going to have problems in the future because the snowplows are going to plow the berm off.
Well, you may have problems with the road to washing out the way into Wilderness Hill.
There's a, there's a misunderstanding here, I'm not talking about a, you know, a Cape Cod curb, I'm talking about a earthen berm that's on, outside the driveway, beyond the driveway.
Question.
But, but to what effect, we just represented to you was that the water was going to flow down to that basin, that it wasn't going to flow.
Right.
From the driveway, down the hill into the adjacent property.
Yeah, we have, we have Mr. Bell here who has concerns about water flowing down onto his property. Now, there's, there is a, a big impact to the, to the, to the surface area of that.
Oh, hang on a second.
I thought, I thought he addressed the concern by explaining to you that the water is going to flow to the catch basin and not down the hill.
He did, and it wasn't adequate in terms.
So you're saying his explanation's inadequate?
To my, yes.
That's a different issue, so you think he needs further mitigation based on your, what?
Based on any, based on the disturbance of this hill.
No, so he's represented to you that his engineering is going to catch that water, and you're saying that's not good enough?
That's correct.
That your requirement for him to engineer a berm on that hill is based on your, what, gut feeling?
My, my experience in the field, yes.
Experience in the field.
Exactly.
Can I ask you a question?
Now.
Just, I might be able to settle some of this, since you put a perimeter drain in, is that right?
I put, we put a hundred-foot diversion trench on one side of the paddock to see if that would help, it helped somewhat, but the paddock was still, part of the paddock was still wet all year.
Okay, now, my question is, is that what do you put in this, and how did you create this thing, did you just, did you dig it out and put the soil to one side, whatever came down, hit this thing and then travel through it around the paddock? I, I have two questions, it could be, the reason being is I have a pond up in Vermont, and I've got lousy soil, and the water keeps coming down and making my pond all silty, so it's very damp, so I built the same thing around it, filled it full of rocks, and it did divert some of it, but it just brought more of it to the sides, so I still have a.
But it moved, it's going to come there.
Yeah, so my question for you is.
But it did divert some of the water over.
It did. What if you would, if you would continue to it further down with maybe piping, would that have helped any?
Well, I think there is so much water up there, and we've done a lot, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars, soil conversions, you know, resurfacing the paddock floors, diversion trenches, and we just got, it's just been six years of.
And just, no matter what you do, it doesn't help, so my next question would be is, how much water are you actually going to add to these properties by having houses there as opposed to no houses there? The amount of water used for a septic system, is that true? The water that the people use in the household that turns around, goes into their.
That's really minimal, you know, they're not using a ton of water when you look at the whole site.
So you're not adding a lot of water to the property, right? You're just going to divert some of it where the, the structures take up places now, it's obviously on purpose, so that water which would have taken up in that foot space of the house is now going to go somewhere else.
I feel, what happens with the drumland is the water, any rain you get, any, any water in the soils runs right along the top of that sea layer, so all, these driveways and the house, they're going to be cut into the hill, so they're going to intercept that water and send it away. I think it's going to actually improve his condition.
Okay.
That's, in my opinion, because of what we're doing, but I'm just.
You know, either a berm or a trench drain, or a trench maybe on that outside section just to intercept the water that crosses that road, I know you got the road pitch down and carried it down to the.
Do we support that recommendation?
I just want to, I just want to.
Could you just move that so I can see?
I don't want to be.
Right, I know, I want everyone to see it, so we'll move it back.
The issue before is, is really, do we want three roadways up there or do we want a shared driveway?
Right.
And that's what it really was, and it makes more sense to put one driveway up to minimize the effect of putting roadways in there and do the best you can with the grading of the roadways that you're putting in to stop the water from coming down the hill.
I think it's fine tuning, I agree with you. I mean, I agree with it, but it's fine tuning.
It's pouring a lot to boot, you know what I mean?
All right, so here's your driveway, here's the, here's the slope, so right now the water's just traveling down the slope.
Sorry, I can't see it.
Yeah, I know. It's a.
Thank you.
So this is going to act as a swale right here, and.
The inside part.
The inside part of it, and then there's going to be a slope here. If we do a berm, I mean, what you're saying is we do something like this, I mean, you can see what you do with the disturbance, we're going to end up.
It's a lot of soil.
It's a lot, and there's plenty of soil up here, it's a big hill, they're going to, you know, a lot of, a lot of earth movement, they can find it, so it's not like he's going to haul it in, but that's going to require cutting trees, now, you have a fifteen, sixteen-foot swath, you're going to end up having a twenty-five-foot swath because you're going to have this berm on the downside, so, you know, what we do is simply pitch it back, and as it goes down, it's past his property line, it will roll, and the water, and this swale, if that's, if this pitch is three inches, that driveway, you know, it's, it's twelve feet wide, it's three inches deep over here, you will never ever, even in a hundred-year storm, you won't fill that up, you might have, you know, a couple inches of water sitting on that side of the driveway.
It's going to be in the developer's best interest to make sure the wa, it's pitched anyway because you're not going to want a frozen road up there.
Right, right.
So you're not want to get it off, get it in and out.
Yeah. The question is, is the road going to maintain this integrity, because you look at Wilderness Hill, that has been worn away and they've had drains underneath, but it's been the only solution.
If, if you put the proper base down, the road will last.
It's going to be paved, I assume.
It's going to be paved. It depends what it's, so. You should have eight to twelve inches of gravel, three and a half to four inches of pavement installed in two courses, so.
Then maybe what we could do is say, not a Cape Cod berm, what's the other kind of berm that's flatter?
Well, the Cape Cod berm is flat, the Cape Cod berm is four inches tall.
Okay, wait, wait, let's start this right, as a point of order, that, he's out of order even suggesting it directly after, without even going through the board to ask what our opinion of that is. You're out of order, Richard.
Would you, would you mind, let me finish?
No, I do mind, I actually, I really do mind, you're out of order.
I am absolutely not out of order.
You're out of order.
That may be your opinion, but I have, I have an absolute right to my constituents to ask a question.
You can ask a question, you're making a statement.
And, and asking the proposer here if there's a, an option that could be used such as a Cape Cod berm in term, in lieu of an earthen berm.
And he's answered your question, and you haven't even addressed the board.
He hasn't answered the question yet.
He has answered your question.
He's saying that putting a berm up there.
He has not, I just asked him the question.
It's counterproductive, and it's an issue for the maintenance of the road.
Cape Cod, any kind of a berm is, that's a, that long-term is not going to last, if you can, anytime you can just slope the land, have a swale, it's going to last a lot longer than any kind of barrier built out of pavement.
I agree, sloping the road will, will, will work very well, but if you, if you have some barrier on the right-hand side that it prevent any hundred-year storm or any unusual condition like snow buildup or something like that from washing over, that would, I thought that that might help ensure Mr. Bell from getting any excess water on his property.
I, I don't think it's going to give any extra added protection, it's going to be a maintenance headache, it's kind of the belt and suspenders routine, I mean, you don't need both, it's just, you just don't need it.
I agree, if you pitch that road back into the hill, use the hill as the retainage area, it's, it doesn't become a maintenance issue, it doesn't become a plowing issue, it's not going to, I think you've done the best you can with the situation that you have there, and if you can put as many detention areas in there to trap the water as it comes down, or, I think you've done the best you can with the situation that's there, and it's a better situation than three driveways going up there. And that's all this is about.
Oh, and I agree with, I agree with Mark on all of that, except, except for the belt and suspenders portion that I'd like to see.
Well, the issue's been raised, so, I mean, if there are problems, it's not ideal, but at least it's on the record, and then it'll have to be dealt with. I know people do deal with that on Wilderness Hill, that's just the nature, some people just get washed out from development up above.
Does Board have any other issues? I'd like to close and then take a vote on it. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing and vote on the shared residential driveway.
Aye.
All moved, all in favor? Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the three lots shared residential driveway on thirty-six Great, uh, Tehadawahn, excuse me.
Is there a draft decision from the tree that should have?
Yes.
Whoever, that reflect the comments you got from the light department.
Oh, okay.
Before we, before we vote on the shared residential driveway, I would like to find from the proposers here if they have any intention of going with, with a belt and suspenders additional berm. My hope would be to protect the neighbor by that additional berm for that, that short distance.
I, respectfully, will say I don't think I would recommend that the builder, developer I, I respectfully will say, I don't think I would recommend that the builder, developer put in a berm. I think we will work to protect the neighbor, and we can probably provide some additional swales, and maybe help them out. But I think the berm is a, the maintenance problem, it's a long-term maintenance headache problem, and would be kind of giving people a false sense of security. It needs to be designed so that the berm isn't required.
Can we hear from Mr. Bell? Sorry? Can we hear from Mr. Bell on this?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's just, it's in the record, our concern is, or what the response is. I, I'm not an engineer, so I can't, I can't provide an opinion on that or analysis of that. I, you know, I'm gonna, I guess, have some faith here that they, that they know what they're doing, and that they've thought of this, and that they're speaking to it, and that they're gonna go through with it.
Alright, so the conditions of approval are that there's gonna be three new service, three new electric services from the new line built by the Littleton Light and Water Department on Teha- coming off of Tehadawahn. Driveway numbers shall be installed with markers at each branch of the driveway. Construction inspections will be consistent with those required for subdivisions, so we will have peer review, at least take a look at it to make sure the drainage is, they're gonna do the best they can with the drainage of the roadway and the pitch of it. No occupancy shall be permitted until the shared residential driveway is constructed to the satisfaction of this board. And the agreement is contingent on maintenance, it's no longer the shared residential driveway, including drainage appurtenances shall be recorded in a forward accepted by the board. It's not, it's not effective till it's, till it's recorded with the registry of deeds. Support of any other thing else they wanna add to it? Alright, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the shared residential driveway for thirty-six Tehadawahn as, as presented to the board. Second, so moved, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, please, I'm also in the neighborhood. Is the shared residential driveway just the spot where the three houses use the shared part? And so, the piece going up off to the left to that single house is not a share, not part of the shared driveway?
No, it is, the part that's-
No, it's, according to the bylaw, the shared part is only until the first driveway comes off.
Till the bridge is off.
Technically, it's not shared anymore, jurisdiction ends where the first driveway cuts over.
So all three people share the expense per se when it comes time?
Yeah, they'll work that.
From that, that first turnoff down?
Correct. Until we accept it as an approved one?
No, we're not. Okay.
On that note, alright, we have-
What you connected to Star Hill.
We have an eight fifteen. Sherry, are you gonna, are you gonna continue your eight fifteen? You're not gonna- Derkey.
We're gonna request a continual to deny by Derkey.
Okay.
About housekeeping items.
Okay, we have a letter from, from town council addressing that, we have-
May I please see?
Thank you very much.
I will, we'll get you a copy of it, if you don't already have it, it wasn't-
Did the big house sell?
Not yet.
Keeping it from Chicago?
Yeah, it worked, I think.
Thank you. There also was a, there also was a letter from nineteen sixty-eight from attorney Charles K., has that been shared with the board?
That's, yes, that's part of it, it's addressed by, town council was weighed in on everything before us. I don't know if you wanna go over it, if you wanna just wait until-
Did they ask for a continuance, or we have in a meeting with it, you seen us how it's, I just wanna know?
They asked for a continuance.
So, is this on the record or off the record?
It's an informal discussion, so-
Yeah, it's informal discussion, it is the attorney of record for the, so, it's kind of up to us if we wanna, wanna discuss it, or do we wanna just continue?
Well, I just wanted to have the benefit of the letters, so by the next week.
You guys should probably, have you looked at the papers, or have you done it, or you wanna, you wanna address it, or do you wanna wait until the next meeting? Okay, did you see?
Chairman, what do you wanna do?
You wanna talk about it?
I don't, I don't mind talking, I was just having some fun, it just-
I think we need to maybe address a little bit of it, since we're, we're going back and forth with open, with informal discussions, maybe we should address a few of the issues so that-
Bottom line is, it's not a town road.
Correct.
That's the bottom line. The town is not accepted, it, the town is not, and those are the three ways, and it doesn't meet any of those three ways, does it?
Well, actually, it's probably irrelevant either way, but I would disagree that it's not a town road, but I don't think we need to get into that, because-
Well, for, for the upgrades that they're, they're speaking, they're doing on their own pocket, which will make it more advantageous to become a town road, I don't have a problem in that sense. The, the one issue that I do see is, I don't see thirty-six or four year, twenty-seven houses going in there, and this is one where I think we ought to have some deep hole test done, and, and, you know, a fair amount of them done, not just a blanket.
Well, if we have Green International to weigh in-
I think, have you seen, Maran actually colored up the plan to show you where the, where the wetlands are and everything else? To give you a better idea of what areas are impacted by the wetlands there, to give us a better idea.
Is the Conservation Commission weighed in? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, they haven't, no, thank you, but no, they haven't.
It's, um, it's a-
Actually, I, I do believe the Conservation Commission dropped property before the smother. So, while they haven't identified everything-
Three years ago?
No, no, December.
Yeah, if, I mentioned they identified wetlands by survey, yeah.
I think before you come back before us, we need a better handle on, A, the, the connection to Foster Street. I mean, the early maps show it going to Buckley, it doesn't have any right to connect to Foster Street, it connects to the railroad easement. The adequacy of the way, whether it's a private road, and what, who owns it, and who has the right to improve it. I know the gentleman who lives up behind it has sent us a letter that he's very concerned about it. I believe he's the guy who lives in the old Grimes house.
That Mish?
Mish, yeah. So he has some definite concerns about it.
The letter you got was from Peak?
Right.
Yeah, Peak.
Peak, not Mish, I thought it was Mish.
Can I get a copy of that letter, please?
He's the brother-in-law, they're related.
So, he's old Mishman.
Second means of egress, the, the, you know, the, the open space land, but how really viable it is. There's a lot of issues that really shouldn't be addressed as an informal discussion, we need, we need traction to this. I think the first thing is, as Peter hit it right on the head, thirty-seven lots is definitely a stretch, a stretch on this, so.
Since we're having an open discussion, Mark, my comments, I'm, I'm concerned less with the number of houses, so long as the open space is, is broken up in such a way that it allows the, the ability for wildlife to cross and have refuge, and we need that second egress. So I'm, I'm less concerned with the number of houses, so long as the open space is considerable enough and of good enough quality.
Well, it's possible to get open space without the number of houses, 'cause they can't build in places they can't build.
Well, clustering them, very-
Well, you can cluster twelve houses opposed to thirty-six houses.
Yeah, but plus, that, that's-
But I understand your, your open zone is great, but the number of houses permitted that they'll pass is, is what we're after first and foremost.
Before we get to an open space plan, we need to have a benchmark of how many houses could fit up there.
I think that's a good way to go, have a number first.
But soil testing.
But nevertheless, the quality of open space, and the quantity of open space is crime error, is, is-
Paramount, that's fine.
Paramount, in my mind, and if that, if that, and that should dictate the number of houses that they can put on, on the property.
No.
No.
In my mind, if they have to reduce-
We need to change our-
Get your minds on the bylaw.
They, they have to reduce the number of houses to provide good quality open space, and they do, and they, then they need to reduce the number of houses.
Well, cluster- Is that in the density calculation?
Mr. Chair, my, my client's argument.
Are you trying to be a wise guy, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm absolutely being a wise guy, is that in the density count?
Then, then control yourself.
No, you control yourself, you just, you bring up, you bring up stuff, go ahead.
I am absolutely, I have an absolute-
Then speak to the bylaw.
I have an absolute right-
Speak to the bylaw, Richard.
Okay, well, this was-
Stop, you know, you're constituents, you represent the town zoning bylaw, not your personal opinion.
I represent the voters who elected me here.
Who, who, why? Did they tell you to come in here and talk about that? Did they tell you to come in here and put animal pathways in there? It's not in our bylaw, Richard. Stop adding stuff to our bylaw. Stop amending our bylaw, because you don't like it.
You understand that there's some concern with the board.
People don't understand the open space concept.
I don't?
No, and I'm-
I'm sorry that you don't.
Appreciate the time on the night.
Thank you, do we have, oh, we need to talk to you about the, the, what are the ZBAs?
Non-conforming uses in structures.
Can I have the time for Guthrie on the ninth, please, Derkey?
Informal discussion, I'll put it after any public hearings that I have.
Eight fifty?
I have to wait until, see if I get a-
Okay, alright, you're doing it.
Public hearing.
What's your calls?
But yeah, it'll be on that day.
Meth, it's in the field.
Yeah, they're coming back.
That's the first one.
I, right, I think I'm gonna have applications for new public hearings, so, do you want this before that or after that?
This is gonna be an all-day affair.
Yeah, let's do them first, they will.
Then, then her, then, then, I mean, then this.
Yeah.
So it's, in the same order you're doing it, yes, field and then-
Yeah, let Sherry keep going, so let me do field and then come right, back in with the grind, and then the new stuff that-
Jimmy, I'll be in class next week.
I'll be up at class.
Got it.
Okay.
We'll do.
Call the grounds, you might wanna contend for, for preliminary, and that might change this too.
Okay, so then as far as your, your ZBA, does the board, have you guys looked at this, do you have a problem with?
Yeah, it seems reasonable, you just wanna summarize, people are making changes, non-conformity changes, sort of stretching.
Three situations that come before us all the time, especially on the smaller lots down at the lake areas. So one situation is where you're already a pre-existing non-conformity, let's say your lot is too small, but you meet all the dimensional setbacks, and you wanna put an addition on, and you're still gonna meet all the dimensional setbacks. That situation can be decided on by the building inspector, nobody needs a special permit, they don't need to come to the ZBA. The second situation is when you have a non-conforming structure or a non-conforming lot, and you have an existing dimensional, or one or more dimensional non-conformities, and you wanna increase that, you wanna add a guest room on that side, and it's gonna increase the existing non-conformity. That one, we can allow at the ZBA by special permit, which is a lesser standard than a variance. You've already got this problem, you want a little more of it, and the ZBA can say, that's not more detrimental than we, what you already have. The third situation, and it's just come up by case law, is where you have pre-existing non-conformity, you wanna add to your house on a brand-new side and create a whole new non-conformity somewhere else. And the new case says, that would be a variance for anyone in town that has a conforming lot, so why do you give it the lesser standard? Just because the lot is small, or just because there's already a non-conformity? So the new case said, that situation should require a variance, and they should pass the threshold of hardship. So, our bylaw didn't say that, we want our bylaw to match what that new case law says, and it'll take some of the confusion out of the applicant who in the past hasn't known whether to apply for a special permit or variance. So this was just our way of saying, here's the three situations laid out, and now you know what you have to apply for.
Do you have a spot on the Maytown meeting for this?
I think she reserved it for us.
Yes, and then just late this afternoon, we got a letter back from town council, from Chris, with rewording, his suggested wording. If you vote tonight to add it to the town meeting warrant, it will be, you can add it to the warrant, and we can have the public hearing next meeting, and people might-
Why don't we do that, why don't we have the public hearing on April ninth?
Yeah.
So for full disclosure, you need to know, the ZBA elected a committee to handle this, the committee hasn't formally met yet. The chair and the vice chair looked at other bylaws, picked, selected what we thought would have to happen, talked to Chris about it, and we are having the formal committee meeting posted next Thursday, and then the full ZBA vote of it next Thursday. But we didn't wanna miss this town meeting, so we're putting the car up a little bit.
We'll have a public meeting on it, on the ninth.
Yeah.
If your committee finds something new and different, it can be modified.
That's right.
So it isn't a pre-decided-
What place, holding place?
Is Mrs. gonna give information of the town, the homeowner in order to go, to know which, which direction to go?
Yes.
That's all of it.
Yes.
Last but not least, well, next to last but not least-
Should we vote on this? I think that's where we're-
Vote to save a spot for it?
Vote to replace this warrant article on the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, okay, I guess we have to vote it that way in order to hold the public hearing on the ninth.
I have a question for Sherry. If, for instance, we have a lot of old, older houses in center of town, one family houses, if somebody wants to take off porch and put on a deck and back, that, that would mean it's a grip before the ZBA?
No, not if the decks complies with the dimensional setback of, the rear setback, I believe, is fifteen feet. So if your deck isn't gonna violate the fifteen-foot backyard setback, you don't need to-
But this says the reconstruction extension or structural change to a non-conforming structure. So that, you know, a deck is a structural element?
If it creates a new dimensional variance, I, I don't know which one you're looking at.
Right, actually, Chris's, Chris's wording is, is here, it's, there, there was, I had a guest room making-
Where'd it go, ready?
Yeah, the lower one.
If I may approach, let me see what you're looking at.
Caution.
Sorry.
Yeah, that, that was this morning's version.
Oh, yeah, those are awesome.
Sure, or Tuesday morning's versions.
Which, does Chris has a version in here?
Yeah, there's one copy.
This is in right here.
So, the one you're looking at is the one on five is out now, and four says-
Read number existing subsections restoration and three abandonment as subsections four and five respectively to account for the new subsections as provided for above, or take any action there. Well, that's just the, that's not what he was looking for.
If I could just address Mr. Crowley's question. The first of those paragraphs says, if you're creating a new non-conformity, you need a variance on a one and two family house. The second paragraph you're reading says, on any non-residential structure, you need a variance. We stricken that after discussion with Chris Heath this morning. He said, A, it doesn't come before us very often that we have non-residential requests this way, and B, we don't think the non-residentials need to be treated differently. So now, so now, whether it's residential or non-residential, they're all gonna be the same. If it's a new non-conformity, it needs a variance, if it's an existing non-conformity that's being expanded, it's a special permit, and if it's a existing non-conformity, there's a new addition that isn't gonna violate anything, the building inspector can give it. It's, it's a very simple process, really.
So an older house can get an addition, or kitchen light, or backboards put on, just a permit from the building?
That's correct.
So it changes what used to be, and a case in point, my house. My house is too close to the road, it's a grandfather because they put the road in after-
Yes.
When they built four ninety-five. I went to get a permit to build an addition on the back of the house, because my house was non-conforming, I had to get a special permit. Even though I wasn't creating any new non-conformity, I was just, it was just a non-conforming structure.
Today, you wouldn't have to do that, the building inspector can give it to you.
With this bylaw.
No, with the bylaw we already had, but I think that your addition even predated the bylaw we already had.
Yeah.
I don't remember when you did it, but Jan Plowey and I wrote the bylaw that gave the building inspector permission fifteen years ago, twenty, twenty years ago? And your addition was before that.
It was.
So, your example is, is the new bylaw.
It only simplifies it for the, the homeowner to know where to go, that's all it really signifies.
And, and also the board, we've had, internally, we've had disagreement, much like you do here, which is amazing.
Oh, we never disagreed.
But the disagreement has been, do you treat it as a variance, or do you treat it as a special permit, because the standard, standard is different.
I was at one for your board where a guy wanted to connect his house to his garage. The garage is non-conforming, it was three feet into the non-conforming, so it was already non-conforming. He wanted to connect the two, make the garage, the existing garage, into a living room, and then, and then stay inside. They wanted to tear the garage down, move the entire garage over, in order to put the thing in, so that he was no longer non-conforming at all, which was ludicrous.
Yeah, that's making sense.
That's what the, that's what the Board of Appeals wanted, one of, one of your esteemed colleagues that lives up on the Harvard line, I think he's, I think he might be to mention.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to hold a warrant article spot for this, and have a public hearing on the ninth for the ZBA's article before us.
Very good.
So moved?
Thank you.
I'll, I'll-
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Includes him in the housing, we don't really have a lot of time to discuss that. The only issue I have with it is, first of all, you're talking about allowing affordable, you're trying to rush, I have a problem with trying to rush this for town, for Maytown meeting, there's a lot of work we still need to do on it, and even though we're getting magic to help us out doing it, we need grassroots, we need people involved, because this is gonna get on town meeting floor, and everybody's gonna question it, and it's just gonna be muddled on town meeting floor. I think we, we're trying to do something very quickly.
If we vote here, you know, the board might change their mind when we get to town floor.
Right.
Never know who, how someone's gonna vote here and then there.
I just think it's-
Meantime.
Yeah, I was playing.
With zoning bylaws, there's always the feeling that you need to rush, because somebody's gonna come in with a preliminary subdivision plan and freeze their zoning, and you're not gonna get all the assistance with affordable, with the rise in residential development that we've seen.
But we still have time, we're still, two thousand and twenty, so it's not a rush to-
No, 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 that's not true.
Okay.
We're at the meeting, that, that's not true.
Well, two thousand and twenty-four.
Here's, here's the problem, right, so you, we, we voted in a plan, housing production plan, without having the zoning to support the plan. So one could argue, and the state could certainly argue, that you didn't have a good faith plan to begin with, because you have no mechanism to, to enforce it. So if we fall behind the number, you're not gonna get that one-year grace period, you're just gonna fall below the number, be subject to another forty B. That's where it stands right now. You guys wanna, and here's the other thing-
Fall behind.
Done, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
What we're asking for is, is mechanisms for us to apply to situations, right? Not necessarily to shoehorn somebody into a solution, you have a couple of different options. There's three or four common options employed across the state. It's better for us if we adopt them all, so that we can use the toolbox, that we, you know, if you have a situation where one doesn't work, you can figure something else out. Right now, for instance, for one of the issues that was before us, okay, they're asking for a subsidy for those, those three potential affordable housing units. We don't have a mechanism to afford them that, we don't have a fund to help them subsidize, and that have to come out of the town's general funds, because we don't have a trust, I'm just giving you an example.
I know, I get that, okay.
So, my point is, this stuff, it'll, the very least, even if we went to town floor and it got voted down because of concerns or whatever, the fact that matters, we should put this together now, put it together now, make the submission, and if it doesn't make May, go to fall, because you, if, if, we've already missed the boat on whatever comes in front of us for being able to do it. That's a lot of units, given what's, what's left for developing in the town. So, if you wanna wait-
I'm not saying to wait, I'm just saying you have so much work ahead of you, it's unrealistic.
How much work?
There isn't much work, most work.
You've gotta educate the public, you gotta let the people talk about it, if you look at the way this bylaw is, is written-
When people don't show up for the talk, they show up for the town meeting, and you need to be informed when it comes to town meeting.
So, we have to speak to a town meeting.
I, you know, Jerry, I absolutely agree with you.
And we need to have somebody that-
I don't think you should wait.
I, I think this should move forward.
I think we should move forward, I'm not saying, I just don't think, I don't think May is realistic.
I think we should put a placeholder on this and finish-
We have a placeholder, I'm just, I'm just being realistic in saying that, having one meeting, you're gonna, you're gonna talk about this in, in May, and in April, and you're gonna vote it in May, you're gonna have one meeting, maybe two meetings.
Right, if, if you're gonna move forward, you have to add two more meetings, you have to have one in two weeks to have the draft done, and then you have to have the public hearing right before town meeting.
Exactly.
The second meeting in April.
I think, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna make May, we have to agree to make the next one.
I agree to make the next one.
I think that's the idea the selectmen suggesting moving ahead. Here's the, here's the way we can make May. And I agree with Jerry.
Jerry, what do you think?
One hundred percent.
What do you have in your hand there, Richie?
This is the schedule on how to make a town meeting. It's, it's at the back end.
I think it's too important to try to rush it all through.
There's no rushing.
It is rushing, and we need to deal with the public.
You're dealing with the public, I think, I-
Right, you've got this whole thing, you, you have to do your planning, but you have to do your planning with public support.
Right.
I think we can get the planning part done, but this public support thing is-
We have two meetings that we can deal with the public on.
That, that's a rush.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's try this.
How many meetings?
If we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, let's see who shows up.
Okay.
If nobody shows up, then obviously-
Then, then we continue to move forward.
Then we have the one more meeting, we've met our obligations, Jerry feels confident, you feel confident.
I certainly do.
I haven't read that, to be quite honest, or what that, that last paper has, I did not read that. So, let's just, let's go forward with that, what do you say?
I, I, I actually think the selectmen were, were right, but we should not rush this for May, work on it continuously, as you say, try to get to the next meeting.
Dawn, this is, Jerry's, Jerry's right on the mark, this, we're-
All right, let's vote on it.
Targeted.
Your vote is to look at, to look at it next meeting? Sure.
Target for another 40B if we don't move this forward.
If you take that vote, there's no warrant article. The selectmen did not put a placeholder on the town meeting.
Oh, they didn't?
No, they did not, that was, they're Monday night-
I thought Keith was gonna make sure they did that.
All right, so we need to, we need a vote to put a placeholder.
There's a recommendation from them.
Right, they, they did not put a placeholder, their vote was to not put the placeholder on.
Then, then forget it. To keep on working on it, but not do it for May. Okay, don't, don't lose steam, you know, keep on-
No, I, I agree, keep working on it, but, okay, so, put a work on it.
What we do have scheduled at this point is Jenny Rake can come on-
Twentieth.
March twentieth, that's Friday morning, eight AM, and-
Who's doing the talking here? Oh, you were?
Just, please, let's, let's just get through this.
We're looking for clarity, just give it a rest.
Well, just let her finish what she says.
And she'll walk us through the next part of the process.
Yeah.
I would really like to hold that date and, and keep that meeting scheduled, if-
Okay, whoever can come to the meeting.
Right, is a working-
Okay, is a working, I agree with that. I'm just saying, I think it's unrealistic to think that we can have something that everybody can understand at town meeting floor, because you, to see how town meeting usually goes, you get a lot of people that don't even, nevermind, I don't have to explain town meeting, you know?
Say it, on public rights.
Nope, nope. How come my name doesn't show up on TV? Yours just showed up five minutes ago, how come mine didn't?
It delayed, two seconds.
Well, where's Mark Martinir, chairman of the Plenary Board, I don't see that.
Hold up your plate.
Oh, there it is, thank you. Anyway, all right, so I, I just think we need to do it.
I think we should at least vote to-
Continue, I agree.
Put a placeholder, or advise, ask the selectmen to put a placeholder.
If the selectmen didn't do it, it's too, isn't it too late?
It's too late.
It's too late, no, it's done.
The selectmen are not, you can't put anything else on at this point.
So, it's too late.
You could, but they've already-
Said they don't want to, so I think leave it at that.
It's on their head, though.
Okay.
Well, why not work with them?
I agree, let's continue to work.
Another 40B on the other side.
You're not, no, you're not gonna-
Then, then in that case, I would, I would make the motion that we, we ask for a placeholder on the town warrant.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree.
Not a good approach. You weren't even at the working ground, I mean, you-
Well, it takes us a quick vote.
I'll, I'll vote for anything that can-
Dawn, I, I attend so many planning classes throughout the year.
Okay, all right, come on, all right.
I understand the concept behind all this.
Does anyone wanna vote to put our own marker on for town, for town meeting for May?
I would say no.
I say no.
No, no here, too.
Without the, without some help from the-
The selectmen, and without a further, not further along, I don't, I don't agree.
I think we'll be all right to do it the next one.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's disappointing that our leaders of the town-
And I just find, I, I'm gonna make a comment, I find it very interesting that you made such a big deal about approving a housing production plan, and everybody knew we didn't have the zoning to do a damn thing about it, which I find to be a joke.
Well, the selectmen are the ones that went down the route with the housing-
Well, the selectmen are the ones that like to talk, and, and that's, that's a really funny joke.
Okay, well, time, time was short, like I said.
Well, just, they should, we should've, we should've done the whole thing as a package.
I agree.
Why approve a housing production plan that we have no mechanism to enforce, we have no, we cannot do any affordable housing in this town as a program.
Because they got MAPC to work on it for nothing, they got it for free, now we're dealing with the consequences of it, so we'll do it with the next part of it, we're gonna get MAC to work on it. I agree with, they should've worked on both of them.
That's just sloppy legislation by the town.
They should've done them both at the same time, I-
MACC, another hundred thousand dollars.
All right, so what, last but not least, the sign bylaw, do we, is there a spot set aside, and does anyone wanna deal with that one?
What does Roland say about it?
Yeah, that's the other thing.
That was an issue.
Uh, well, I've, I've had an informal discussion with Roland, and he is not for it at all, and, and I'm not gonna speak for him directly, but I will paraphrase the conversation in that he can't enforce the current bylaw.
Right.
He thinks the current bylaw is effective, he wishes he had the staff to enforce the current bylaw. So, I mean, to put another bylaw forward that he can't enforce, doesn't make any sense.
I'm not in-
The longer we go without having a bylaw-
We have one.
We have one.
One that designates what signs can and cannot be, how they're lit, how they're, how they're, oh, shown to the, you know-
The types of, the types of signs that are available now on the market could super, super, they circumvent almost our entire bylaw. Our bylaw is so antiquated that any bylaw we have on the books that picks up these current types of signs would be an improvement.
We already have a bylaw, and it does address it.
Can I make, can I make a comment, I don't know if this is relevant or not, there's a group trying to form called Littleton Business Association, and it's picking up a little momentum with the downtown businesses, and they're very concerned about the signed bylaw proposals, so you don't have a space on this agenda anyway, it would be really nice if somebody in town would reach out to that organization, because we're the ones that it affects the most.
But, 'cause you have to, there's nothing granted, you have to get rid of your signs.